Six o'clock, it's time to begin. If you'll stand please, we'll have our pledge of flag and then brother Trump. Would you state the invocation?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Your heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve our community in this capacity. We pray God that you bless this community and help us, Father, to make the right kind of choices to help it to be blessed. We pray, Father, that you pour out your Spirit in all things that we do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Welcome everyone to our meeting. As little visitors, appreciate that. First thing on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes.
Second. If we move the second to approve the monthly meeting, it begins on June 9th. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we have a special call meeting of June 23rd, meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve those.
Okay, motion approved the second.
Second.
Okay, if we moved the second, that we approve the June 23rd minutes. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Next on agenda is our paying of our bills.
I make a motion we pay our bills.
Second.
Okay, if we move the second, we pay all bills. All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed?
Apologize, I was reading something.
Yeah. Motion passes. Old business, ah, we have none listed, unless something we've missed, I don't think there'll be any. And a new business, first thing is North Mulberry Street Light.
There was a resident, I don't remember the exact address, 518, that asked about getting the street light on a pole, there's one in their yard.
It's in between 518 and 534.
So I thought we'd put it on minutes as long as...
How far away is another light from it?
It's not that far to another light, is it?
Not real far, but they said they've got a real dark spot there, they've got a bunch of kids that come to their house, and the neighbors' kids and their kids are always out and about.
Playing in the street, by the way.
Yeah.
It is, it is very dark there because I drove.
And, but they play, the kids play in the street. There are five basketball goals in that street.
That's something to look at separately here, but with this, historically, you know, not that close between the light, and not that we don't want a light, but is it to trees, need be trimmed more so than...
I haven't looked at it at night, she just called me and asked me about it, if I could bring it up and see if she can get a light for you.
I spoke with her also, because I told her typically we do it at intersections, and I'm not out at dark very much because I just don't see very well, but I did drive down Mulberry Street.
Is the, is it the Habitat for Humanity house?
Yeah, it is, it is pretty dark in that area.
Oh. There's a light on the corner of...
Six.
Fifth and sixth. Fifth and sixth, so there's one, there's one here and one there. They're in between them, so...
I think there is one there at six.
Yeah, there's one at fifth and sixth.
I knew there was one on fifth.
And I'm not real sure if there's one, one across the street there on that house, right there across, you know, where that, where that big house you, that you all used to own, or, I don't know if you all ever owned.
Yeah, because it's fifth street.
Yeah. And, but I'm pretty sure there's a...
There is.
It's brighter than you think there.
It's not that we're not going to put one, but we need to get more information. If there's one at fifth and sixth on that street, need to look to see if the trees are blocking, not light, that we might have to get the trees trimmed, and if not, we may have to get a light. So whoever's talking to them could refer that to them, that we might, not saying we won't do it, we need a little more information, because we gotta pay, I thought, how many dollars, about six or seven a month for every light in this town?
I think both of us have talked to them, because whenever I told her that typically we only put them at intersections, but I would drive down because sometimes at intersections, lights are out.
Well, she also made the request earlier to put up a speed bump there, and I told them we were not doing that.
Yeah, I talked to her about that and the reason why we put it.
Okay, but it's only whoever's conferring with her could tell, we're still gonna look at.
I think you're the most recent person that spoke with her. Based upon the last, the last conversation I had with her, she had talked to you about it last.
And could, wanted to make sure, wanted to make sure you jump back next month to give us the result of what you found?
Yeah.
Okay, that, appreciate it. You can put it back on there.
David, you and I can...
Put it back on the, on the agenda.
Take, you want to make a motion, table list till next meeting?
Please.
For more, make a motion, we table this till the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion is passed, only yet to vote on table, only thing, but we'll all say aye in case? All in favor say aye. Been a long time that study part of this procedure. Housing Authority Board Member, Jill, do you have a name?
Mary. Mary Michelle Walton.
Yeah, I said it one moment.
Who's is it?
Michelle Walton, she lives, she lives actually at 4052 Walden Court, and she's interested in being on the board, and I think she would be good.
Okay, you'd like to take the form of motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Mary Michelle Walton as a board member of Beaverdam Housing.
Okay.
I didn't know if you saw that or not.
No, I didn't see it in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
If we move the second for Mary Walton, a board member of the housing authority, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Visitor's comments, it's on the agenda first, or we'll just handle that. Jill, you're a visitor, do you want to say anything?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, Mike?
Just let y'all know, we're in process of sending Gavin Warren and Carson Delory to pay for it. Maybe next Thursday, we can get our paperwork done with him in Boling Creek.
Okay.
That's all that I've got.
Okay. You're in pretty good shape, huh? Got a new truck though?
The brush truck.
Got a new truck, all right?
Yes, it is in...
It is pretty.
Looks very nice, too. I saw it parked down, I didn't get to have that day.
We've got used it a couple times already, and it's gonna work out very well.
Let me come by tomorrow and see, because I won't be able to after tomorrow for a few days.
It's, it's a looker.
The other thing was the brush truck we had in the budget, we just wanted to know if you guys were ready to put in paper for bids on chassis.
Is that already in the budget?
We're ready to take sealed bids on it.
Okay, they're ready then.
We just need to...
We don't, it was already put in the budget, right?
We need to put it in there that we're ready to take bids in the closing date.
Okay, but...
That's that for a motion?
The closing date will need to be, or the bid opening date will need to be...
Are you a fan or something?
Yes, there's a flaw there or something.
August 11th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, let a motion to take the bid, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, take the sealed bid for the chassis for the truck. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, anything else?
Yes, our old rescue truck, we need to declare it surplus to where we can put it on gov deals to sell that.
Okay. Can we sell it before we get the other one?
Do we need to keep it till?
Yeah.
You want to need it?
We've got the new rescue in, new rescue's in and equipped, ready to go, everything that's out of the old rescue, it is ready to go.
Okay.
So everything, and it's a 1994 International Heavy Duty Rescue, is what I think it is.
And we have a copy of the bids, what we've specked out on the brush truck, if y'all would like to see a copy of that.
Okay. Did you have a motion to take the bids?
Yeah, I make a motion we bid out the international truck.
Surplus it.
Surplus it, surplus it on gov.com.
Got a second from current buddy, don't be hurt there, huh, Jill?
Get a second on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Jim, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, anything else there, young man? Scotty, good to see you, what, you got something for us?
Um, yeah, I, I don't know, really know what the best way to go about it is, I bought your old house over here on Third Street, and I bought it in 2020, and within three months of living there, I filed an insurance claim, and I have that issue after issue after issue, and they just progressively keep getting worse. Travis has been trying to help me for the better part of a year on it, and done what I can, come to find out, I put in a standard backflow valve, and we've jetted it time and time and time again, hoping that it's cleared out to where now water won't come back up in, but now I've come to the issue where when we took apart the pipe, I mean, I don't talk to you about it, but we took apart the pipe, and the pipe is four inches, and, or at least half of it is filled with rocks and mud and debris that I can't get clear, and so I've had sewage in my basement for the better part of eight months, and I, I can't get rid of it.
That's something I didn't have that much in what I, for the whole years I lived there, because it is an issue with the way that was built.
Exactly.
Uh, it, the flow is about maybe, at the most, two inches from where it comes of the house to the sewer.
And so it's, and to my knowledge, the more I dig into it, the more I've come to realize it's not up to code.
Well, it put in from the house out to the road new when I bought it, because I did have that put in, but...
But there's still not enough slope to, to meet code.
Well, that house was built probably before there was a code, and that's what they put in new.
Yep.
Uh, and that basement may not, it may be a little lower than what they would build today, or the house wasn't built up enough. I'm not sure about that. Uh, to get the gravel out...
I mean, I've jetted it, I've had ESPN come jet it three times in the past three months, I've had Lykan's come jet it, I've called the city, I've called Jill a hundred times in the past year, and you guys have come jet it, you've jet it your lines, you've jet it my lines, and, and there's still rocks and mud and all kinds of stuff in it, and I can't flush my toilets to get everything out, it just comes back up in my basement. I need to sell my house, and I can't sell my house in the good conscience of...
Where is the rock set in the line out in the yard?
Oh, I mean, the entirety of, I don't know if it's up in my basement, at this point, but where I put in the backflow valve, as far open as you can see both ways, there's rocks and mud all through it, which is why a few months ago, I was told by a plumber that ran a camera, that I had a collapsed line, and I had a collapsed line, quote unquote, to their knowledge, because I had rocks and mud in it, but I don't have a collapsed line, I just have rocks and mud in it, so, this is like, before I had rocks and mud in it, I still had issues, had issues the moment I moved in, so...
Do we have any kind of tool that we could get that out?
That jet, jet you've got to go in, to push that out.
People go on the service line. See, the, the problem, and me and Scotty's talked about this at length, one, I don't even know that there's two inches of fall from his basement to the...
That's what that, the Lykan told me when...
I don't even know if there's that, uh, so, the reason I know the problem's down the city line is there was a contractor up there that hit a two-inch water main here two or three weeks ago, maybe a month ago now. That two-inch water line spilled out of the water line and went down into the manhole, it was, that's where it was escaping, it happened right by a manhole, so when it leaked, it was leaking into the manhole, the manhole never backed up, it took full two-inch water pressure for an hour, never backed up. The city main is clear, we, I mean, we've jetted it, we've root cut it, we've cambered it, we've done everything we can do, our line is clear, but he don't, he don't have the fall to get there, so, and there's nothing that, I mean, I hate to say, there's nothing we can do to get any fall.
And I've had the rocks and the mud in there for better part of six months, because I've had it jetted and jetted and jetted and jetted, I mean...
And if the rock, if the rocks are on your side of the cleanout, on the backflow preventer, that means they're coming from your house somewhere, either your, your basement or your French drain around your basement, so you, you could have a collapsed line closer to your basement.
I just don't know what to do about it, I don't know, I mean, at this point, you're either gonna need a septic system to get approved or a septic tank, or, or the line's gonna have to be brought to code, because no amount of...
Well, I can tell you...
What Lykan is, is ever gonna fix.
I can give you an answer to one of those things, in the cities here, you would not be approved for a septic. And the other thing you'd have to do, only way to do it, and if I had lived there and had the problem you have, I would have put a pump station in and raised it up to come out.
I have a some pump, but like what Travis said, I...
No, the whole house would have been put on a pump, and everything...
Your sewer needs to be put on a pump.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you wouldn't have it under the house.
He would pump it up and out.
That's the only thing that would alleviate it, and that's right, Travis?
That's what, I've talked to Lykan's about it, that's what Lykan's has told me needs to be done.
But from where I stand, that's still just a band-aid, because the pump's gonna have to be maintenance, line's gonna have to, to have some sort of generator on it for when the power goes out, and we have bad storms.
Well, it'll all be in yours on the house, if you had a generator of your house, it would have a generator, it's not the city pump, it's not, anything to the city, it's all yours.
I know that.
Yeah, so if you, if you wanted to go to that expense...
Is there anybody else that's got one of those in the city?
Oh, we have multiple residents that have pumps that pump out.
I have a some pump with an entire trench drain, the guy that bought the house from you put it in, but it's one of those things where it's not hooked up to the sewage, it's hooked up to groundwater.
It's just to keep the water out of your basement, but we have several people in the house that have pumps that pump into our sewer.
So...
I can think of one, the house right behind Beaverdam Grade School has one, Keegan Emery, the one he bought, he just put a...
I mean, that's just an option. But I'm not sure what else we can offer.
But what, what can we do to bring the code, the line up to code?
See, the city's line is up to code.
Your line would have to be raised, and the only way to raise it is to put a whole house pump in it with a grinder, bring all your sewage out higher and come down.
The city's line has the right fall per foot, the problem is, is your line is lower, or too low, to get you the fall, so you would either, it's the two options we've discussed previously, you'd either have to do away with the plumbing in your basement, which you said isn't an option.
I'm not sure what happened.
I don't sense...
Scotty, I lived there 25 years, and I only had trouble twice, I'm not sure what's happened after that with the other fellow, I don't know. I did have issue twice, and it was all during heavy rains like we had.
Yeah, I'm not sure, so, I just come to find that we had rocks and mud, which signified to plumbers that I had a collapsed line, turns out I don't, I went through the troubles to fix a collapsed line that doesn't exist, so...
The only thing they might need to do as far as a collapsed line is it might be back towards your house more, because they just dug it by the road, if I remember right.
Yeah, the rocks and mud are coming in somewhere.
Yeah, but if he's got a, the backflow valve, they can't come from...
Yeah, they, they won't now, but they were already there, so...
That, when I bought it, they just dug about three foot by, under the basement, and hooked the new line to it, and lets it come apart under there and under the basement and washed in there, that's the only place it probably could have come, they went about three foot back up under the basement floor where it hooked the new line in.
If he's getting rocks and mud, it could be from the French drain they put around his basement.
Don't know.
It's, it's not coming from the city, because our line's clear.
Well, and if they put something in since Charles Gate, that other guy had it, he may collapse the line when he was putting that in, I mean, it could have been that too, so, Lykan would have...
I'm just sorry you deal with it, Scotty, I don't know what to tell you.
It's a nightmare, I mean, I'm a sugarcoat, it's an absolute nightmare.
I know how much trouble I had in two, 25 years.
Let the bank deal with it at this point, like I, I'll never buy another house ever again.
Well, get one without a basement, you'll be all right.
It's just a night, it's just...
I'm sorry we can't give you an answer to what to do, it's just whatever you choose to do, if that, of that pump, that would be the, the option, but that's your choice, I'm sorry.
It's just maintenance and, you know...
Anybody who have a comment to, I don't know what else to tell you. I'm sorry, Scotty.
Just a little...
Ma'am, you have something to bring to us?
Yes, I was just checking on the status, and I know I spoke to you like briefly, but I'm just checking on the status of 807 Sunset Drive, the house that's right beside me, that's real grown up, I had presented all those pictures and information last night.
I remember that, yes, uh, where we are, Sam?
Um, we have, we went through the violation, the citation, and the final order, the final order was mailed out at our last meeting in code enforcement, so roughly, probably the beginning of next month, they will vote to put a lien on the property, and then once my lawyer gets that done, I'll bring the lien to you guys, and then just go from there. But it's, it's through the process.
Yeah, so when the lien is brought, will somebody from my family need to be here to, like we have interest in taking in part of the lien, like for doing the yard work and things?
So what, what'll happen on that, the city will place a lien due to code enforcement fines, at a certain point, the city can decide to foreclose on that lien, and then that property will be sold to the courthouse steps.
Okay, so it can...
Is that how that process works?
Okay, do you have a time estimate on that, by any chance at all, like...
Do not, um, I would, the lien will be voted on at the beginning of next month.
Right, okay.
To the code enforcement.
Okay, so at the voting process...
And it has to go to our lawyer, yes.
Okay, when is that next meeting?
It will be the first Monday, 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And then it'll go to my lawyer at that point, and then once he gets it done and gets the lien done, it'll be mine.
Okay. Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
Anything else, David? Okay, right, Mary?
I think I have put you all out, packets in, and I'm just gonna tell you, you can read them. Now, one of the, the red here is your new, new information on our college definition, signage, and also the business that has been done to the other department, all these were, oh, and it started in 91.
Right.
The subdivision ordinance, it's in the back of, I didn't copy that for you, because it's back some nights, and we can't do anything like that now, so Hartford has asked, asked us maybe get Brad to help us take care of some of this stuff, because we did get the comprehensive plan up to date, and about three years ago, we got that finished, and it's like my group really, really worked on it, so now, we have to get everything from that comprehensive plan, which would be zoning up and down through here with all the B1, that right down through here with all the B1, and it's just not running, and I've had to work with it that way, and then just irritated that.
Well, we'll go again and fix it.
Does it show in here, when you say like B1 and B3, what, what is B1, what is B3?
The definition in that book?
You see it, right?
Yeah, I see it, because I hear those, but I don't...
What pages is it?
Well, here the B1, you're gonna be in this section here, we don't have a lot...
What pages is that saying?
On page five of the instruction, of the, um...
Index?
Yeah. The, um, what did you call it?
Index?
Table of contents, right at the top of it, on page five, it's table of contents, and it's Article 6, Establishment of Districts.
But if you didn't have a B1, you're gonna, you're gonna be able to go through the whole page, and be like, I'm just saying, you know, what, what you have down here, I can help with, the barbiturate, sometimes they'll have the barbiturate, but they don't have a limit on the size of the lot, other than you have supply, on-screen parking, or behind, if you have test, I think you have room for your person that are working in those, that's about your only thing, because they can be hooked together, we have down here, so we got a B3, we have a B3 down there, so I just have to work like it's a B1.
Okay, this has already been approved, this, right?
Yeah, that's...
Okay, so what do we have to do?
Well, okay, because that was all the, the things that were updated, the rest of the, oh, again, which would be residential...
Right.
It would be what's allowed in the city, not industrial and floodway, so none of that's been updated, and Hartford had Tara ask me if I wouldn't mind asking Brad to work with me and the city to just regroup it all, because it needs to totally be rezoned and stuff, and that's all of what I have, you know, you have to have some help with it, but if you look at, if you look on this page, if you go to page two, you can see that I did talk to Brad, and they did come over and speak to me a couple of different times, and this is what I got back from stating what I could do, a couple of times on my tape, and I was surprised how long it took, but I, but this is just an estimate of the things I can look at and help with, and then of course, there's some things like, sort of the care we can go with, with you all, and any citizens that want to come in.
So some of our areas actually need to be rezoned?
Oh, yeah.
And how is that going to affect?
Well, with the comprehensive plan, it's pretty true, there's some areas that need to be, now, the way it's done is like a urban residential compared to a subdivision residential or that type of thing, and we don't have that, we just have all one, I'm pretty much ready.
Because I know I don't want to put any burden on any businesses.
Well, when we rezone, they'll be grandfathered in, right?
Oh, yeah, but I mean, yeah, because really what I've done, most of it, down here, it needs to be B1, because they're sitting there, I like a B1, and you can own another direction, there's not a lot of difference from a B2 to B3, other than the B3 is allowed to have car lots, tractor sales, drive-in restaurants, you know, different things like that, that take up a big space, or a B2 is more limited space for what you know, it's mainly a lot of void area, we'll keep some things out, we have that one, B3, you have a lot.
The other thing we have to do tonight, before we, just plan this for the future, or...
Well, this is something that, this is just a, this is just an idea of what can be done, and Brad's gonna come on and talk to everybody, and I'll get everybody when they meet.
Or does we need to wait on them?
Oh, yeah, we're not really doing things, but I mean, I wanted you to know ahead of time, because you also have to agree with what they want to draw, which will be a lot.
It usually is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but this is, this is not something that they keep it hard on you to do, you know, to stop the street or something, unless you have a planner that wanted to set, and if that's all they do, do, they work with these things, you know...
So this is really for our information until we get ready for Grad?
Yeah, and of course, these, the red path, the red path up here is the new ordinance, and so I wanted you all to have a talk with it, I never had enough to hand out, so I had enough papers.
Okay, well, we appreciate all that work.
Well, I hope it helps, because I said that I was leaving.
Well, I had heard.
Yeah, and I was asking, Tara said, can't you stay through this, and I said, well, I can, I can, I probably can do that, then I get this, and it says, 12 months to 18 months.
Well, you just take your personal life as you need to, we don't worry about that.
Well, I said, well...
There's always something I make you stay for.
I said, I, I can stay through that, but when I, when that's over, I will, you all have to get somebody else to do this.
We, we, okay, thank you.
All right, but anybody have any questions?
Not yet, maybe a lot later.
Whatever I have to do, I'll be glad to try and work it.
Okay, commissioners, Jim, you got anything to bring up?
No, I think it's been running pretty good from my standpoint.
Ms. Sandy?
I do, and it sort of has to deal with streets, and it doesn't, the golf cart issue.
We've had a couple accidents.
Mm-hmm, and, and it's a pure...
If you knew about those.
Pure miracle that...
I knew that one Friday.
No one was...
Yeah, we were, we were there.
Same golf cart that was left before, I turned it over sideways, that he went too fast around the corner, remember that one? Same golf cart, hit a car head on.
Friday?
I think it was, what, Thursday or Friday?
Friday was one overall problem, Goshen.
And golf, Goshen.
Which they're continually, and I know we dealt with this years before, whenever golf carts started becoming popular and people, so what is being done, evidently, these are underage...
Are they supposed to have a driver's license to drive them on the street?
They're 16, drive, both have insurance, they're homeowners or someone, but...
Of course they have some kind of license on them also.
Yeah, they, they probably have turn signal, and there's several things that goes on. We only have four, and I know one now in the city that's actually been...[1712.12] Uh, we only have four that I know of now in the city that's actually been.
What?
For this family.
Being inspected.
Now, what about the new state law, which, which is the same requirements what the city has in place, but who does the inspections on the cars? Does that, does that run to the county, or does it go to the city?
They go, they go, the, that coach here, get inspected, and they come over.
I think they were, they were counting.
And go through.
I figured out.
I've told my guys, already, over, if they kiss golf cart on the road, underage, underage kids. Tow it, let the parents pay for a tow bill or two, and then let's talk to them.
Cause this is a pure miracle that someone was not killed.
Did you see her, actually, her face, how she got it there? She looks, she's pretty well fresh all over her face.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's painting both on the face, I appreciate it.
One of it's got stitches, one of it's got burns, great burns.
Yeah.
And on, and the one in the vehicle, I know is quite traumatized.
Oh, yeah.
Well, she was young too, so I'm sure she is.
I can't imagine myself, and I'm old.
Anything else, Sandy?
No, that's just, it's been a concern, but nothing had happened. And when this, I thought, you know, some, something's got to be done.
I'm saying for a long time, it's just waiting for the accident.
Waiting to happen.
That is, eventually it'll go ahead.
And it's funny, it's that same family, that same golf cart, bucked off town, that's two of them, with that same cart that I know of.
Is that one of them that had been inspected?
Pardon?
Is that one of them that had been inspected, was legal?
I don't think so.
To the street?
Friday?
Yeah.
It would pass inspection if they had inspected, if it had anything on it.
The other, I think it's brand new. It's a twenty-four, twenty-five.
Wow. Is there something that we have to get out, that we could get out again, like we did back years ago, whenever people started riding golf carts everywhere? Um, that maybe OC Monitor could post, or be posted in the.
I know that the county has a committee, and they're gonna, they're gonna deal with it.
They're addressing it also? Okay.
And I don't know if, I, I assume the cities can.
We, we coordinate with county.
Do something. I, I don't know if cities, if the county says it's cool, if the city, cause this is more side-by-sides and not really.
Yeah, the state.
Golf carts. So like, I think the way that they're making it out with the side-by-sides, as long as you can keep up with traffic, you can just.
There was one going down Main Street, Saturday.
So, uh, and golf carts can't keep up.
Yeah.
But, you know.
But there was three that's been, that's legal, there was one that was inspected. I inspected one this afternoon, told us told. So.
They'll keep up if you know how to set that governor.
Yeah, well, my, my point is, is that they're going to, should they decide to allow it, and I don't see why they wouldn't, cause most people don't do it. But then they'll, there'll be some regulations and wherever you gotta do to be legal through the county.
But you said that's.
When it comes to golf carts, that's probably gonna fall onto the cities, because that's more, golf carts can't be on state highways.
Right.
I think you can cross.
I don't think you can.
You're not supposed to. Thirty miles, I think is all you can be on it.
Yeah, so.
Three tenths?
You can cross.
Has to be straight.
You can't cross on four lane.
Four lane.
You can cross on two lane.
But anyway, what about cross?
The point of it is that they're gonna have, there's gonna be regulations that, that they come up with.
I wouldn't wanna cross that street on a.
Personally, I, I would.
My mama didn't want me even crossing on my bicycle.
I would've been never done it.
And I think I could've pedaled a bicycle faster than a golf cart.
Or when we did, I thought, well, that's, that's a.
It's always some.
You can pedal a bicycle faster than a golf cart.
I could, I could've been paying those taxes.
I'm sure the special industry group, they got all that passed anyway. So it's gonna, we'll see how it plays out, we'll have to deal with it.
If, if, if there's anything that we can do to keep anything for, like that from happening again, I want us to do whatever we can in our power.
Parents is gonna have to do that.
Well, like you said.
No, the parents are gonna have to do that.
Toe, toe in.
And we don't, you know, so if y'all get some complaints, you know, I'm talking to y'all, let's say if you catch, take them out on the road.
Prepared.
Underage, and they're not legal, have a thing towed.
Well, if they're underage, it's already not legal.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but, you know, have a tow, let the parents pay for a renter bill.
Yep.
And then maybe the.
Stop doing it.
Let the kids quit doing it.
Yeah, I'm just. It's amazing.
Thankful no one was harmed more than.
Especially if they wind up, you don't go get them, and they wind up in stockade and charged every day, and all kinds of stuff with that.
Is that it, Sandy?
Mm-hmm.
Kevin?
Um, I would like to talk about one thing real quick down the park. Uh, I like to look into getting a speaker system for the whole park. Where we put it on poles just in certain places, where if we ever have to broadcast something over the whole area, that it can be heard anywhere in the park. Because, uh, and it was brought up to me the other day, there was a kid missing at the farmer's market, and they were trying to find the parents. And they didn't have any way to, they were just word of mouth, going around saying, hey, do y'all, did y'all see a kid that, and the kid was just over playing, he wasn't doing anything wrong. And I thought, you know, that's not a bad idea, where we had something where we could hit a loudspeaker, go, hey, we're looking for a child, wearing a blue shirt, you know, gray pants, whatever. And it would be nice if we could do that. Is there a way we could do that, Travis? Do you think it'd be very?
Well, we've already got it a little bit at the baseball park.
Yeah, but I'm talking, it, we're, you know, it's not over at the farmer's market, it's, it's, I'm talking about being, where we could do it over the whole area.
Where would you centrally locate the, where you talk at?
That would be, that would be something we'd have to look into. It would have to.
Cause you can talk from the baseball park and hear it across the park.
Hey, could that be, uh, sent away with more speakers, or it could go other, can that, well, whole more speakers, will that have more amps that, you put some more speakers on that system?
Sure could. There's four different amp boxes up there and upstairs.
Could you check on that?
Yeah, I don't think it would cost us a lot to redo that and make it where it's a little bit more feasible.
But if it's near a farmer's market, who's gonna have access?
That's what I'm, I mean, where would you locate the?
That's what, that's what, we might have to have a ex, an extra access, and have to sort of have a key where we could turn it on there if we had to in case of emergency or something. Or give it to the policeman where they go over to the ball feet, you know, something happens.
Yeah, well, if the police have to go there, they can yell it on their cars.
Yeah.
Here to the whole park.
Yeah, that is true too, so.
And Mike has that fancy voice on his.
I mean, Keith, the policeman has to go, and something like that could be simple.
Yeah, it could be, and I, I just wanna look into it.
We can look at just getting a few speakers for just the farmer's market, if that's what you're saying.
Well, not just the farmer's market, cause we're gonna, you know, it's getting expanded. We're getting kinda big down there.
Well, I mean, just for that area.
Yeah, but I'd like it to go all the way around, so it's even over there where the.
Pond is?
Yeah, where the pond and all that is too. Just because I think we're gonna go in that direction next.
If you can, see what we think.
Yeah.
And I might, you know, just, just, just to see, just.
To get to the ponds, probably gonna be more than what you're thinking.
Well, I.
Did you start to say Dustin something?
I was gonna say, they put up a whole system in Hartford.
Y'all in downtown, they did.
Just the other radios?
Yeah.
That's what I would like to have.
And I think.
Yeah, and we could do that here maybe, even downtown.
I don't, I don't know where they've got a couple of boxes, so they have a couple of boxes.
They plug my cannon.
Yeah, yeah.
So, those ones that play music, they can make announcements?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and they put it over, yeah.
Because they do it during their festivals, different places, they're, they chime right into that system.
I would like that a lot.
Travis, you.
Well, I mean, it's just, it was a suggestion, because that was brought up to me, that they were looking for a kid. I thought, well, it wouldn't be nice if we just hit a button and everybody in the park could know where, you know, that we're looking for a certain kid, and probably find him a lot quicker. They did find him within ten minutes probably, but still.
Anything else?
Ten minutes to.
And that's all I had, was that one. That's all I had.
Long time.
Anything, AB?
Uh, we're not going in a closed session, are we?
Only, only if you say so.
Do we need to?
Uh.
If we need to, we can.
Well, the matter that, that you want it to be filed is filed.
Okay.
And it's a question about whether you wanna have a discussion about it or not, really.
Do y'all have a discussion about it?
If you feel that it's necessary. If you feel that it's necessary that we have a discussion.
Uh, I don't necessarily think that, the.
Are there any questions you have that we need to answer?
No, I think, I think what's being filed is fairly comprehensive. Uh, I think it covers all of the issues. Um, everybody that's in that plaza will be served with the, with the summons on it. Will have an opportunity to be heard if they choose to be heard. Uh, in, including, uh, Mills and Stewart. Um, and, um, I have no, we don't have any way of knowing how, how, uh, the gentleman from Henderson is going to respond to it. But, but, uh, if we have to have a hearing, we'll have to have a hearing. The, the complaint took a while to prepare, it's about twenty-five pages long, so it's not a, it's not a, you know, there's, there's a lot of allegations in it. And we've attached exhibits to it. So, um, uh, it may take just a while to get it over with.
When was it filed?
Uh, last there so.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, and, and unfortunately, uh, the chief of police doesn't seem to wanna be involved in it. And so we may, we may have to have a, uh, kind of a, a single amendment to the complaint, but that'll be alright, that won't take, that won't take long, and, uh.
You just tell me what to say. I thought you were meeting tomorrow, I'll give you the.
Well, if we can keep you from falling, we, we.
Just give me a chair.
Okay, anything else then?
No, I don't have anything, unless y'all want to talk in more detail about it. I brought a copy of it for everybody if you want it.
I would like one.
Talked it to them.
Yes.
Y'all want a copy of one of these?
Is that the?
This is the, this is the forty-five. You all seen it?
You have copies.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I brought them.
I think we all probably need one of them. That's all, that's our four of us. You want, Travis?
Give one?
Yeah, give one more.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I give one Jill for Paul.
Okay, okay, that's.
Hey, I got, I got.
You got to have one over here.
Still need one more.
Give me one more?
Now I don't have one.
You still need another?
Yeah, I need one more.
Yeah, Travis has one.
Yeah, we're good now.
Yeah, we're good now.
We're good now.
Okay.
And, and one, one, one other thing, uh, that after what Eddie brought up. Uh, the next thing we were gonna do, when we got, when we got these things taken care of. Was go on to, uh, potential condemning, uh, properties that, that violate basically the nuisance ordinance.
Right.
And, and you can sell them, you can have them sold at the courthouse door, but you can also con-condem them. And e- either aspect, either way of doing it, uh, is perfectly fine. But the major problem with condi, for the city to condemn it, obviously, yeah, the city then owns it. And has to clean it up, but, but.
Be by five or six of them.
Do what?
Be by five or six of them.
Yeah, I know.
I know two, three, really, I know three.
I know there are several of them, and the, the, the brief period of time when Justin was over here, I know that he filed one or two of them. So it's been done, it's been done before. And, uh, looking at the ordinance and, and what has to be filed, it's, it's really fairly simple compared to this thing. The, the one against, uh, that, that involves U.S.C.O. But, but, um, um, y'all have to decide, uh, to what extent, uh, you want the city attorney to do anything on it.
That's something we think about after we get this going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
We'll have to do those individually anyway.
Do what?
We'll have to do them all individually.
You, you, you definitely do each one of them separately and individually.
There's a new business that's going in out there too, I believe.
Do what, please?
I think there's a new business that's going in out there that I don't see listed.
Well, we, I was not notified of another, another business, but the, uh, something else coming in out there really doesn't matter.
Okay.
It, the, the, the primary claim is between the city acting by and through the fire department and U.S.C.O. The only reason that those other, the, the, the businesses that operate within Northside Plaza, the only reason they're listed. Is because we, we actually want them to, uh, uh, enter an appearance, and it can be done, uh, through Stewart and Mills, basically. But, but there's really two things at issue here. Fire protection is one of them. But if you look at the first exhibit to the ba, back of that petition, you're gonna see the, it'd be exhibit one. If you look at exhibit one, it is the old Beaver Dam Branch Bank.
Let's, uh, not get too detailed with it, cause we're still in open session.
I know, that's okay. But if you look, you look at it, ultimately, you can get in and out of there without any issue, and that's the way it always was.
Okay.
Uh, and, and, thank you, Mr. Patton, I could talk more than that for two thousand and three.
I didn't realize that was just in two thousand and three.
No, 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 that's in nineteen eighty-one. That's what's left of it. I know that's a picture of it.
Yeah.
That'd be all we have tonight, and all we have.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, and, uh, all other business and here motion to adjourn?
No, 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 no.
Oh, Travis?
You never asked me.
Oh, Travis, Travis has got some stuff.
I thought I asked you.
Uh-uh.
Are you waiting to go and go to.
Oh, we never.
No, no, no.
Treat you like it's with Larry.
You don't wanna go in closed session? No, I'm fine. Uh, first thing, the two F one fifties we put up for surplus, two thousand nine and twenty thirteen, they have both came off auction today, so if y'all wanna look at this, we just need a motion to accept them.
You satisfied with what they offered?
Well, with what they, with what they brought.
If he's satisfied, I don't.
Yeah, I don't seem to see him either.
Okay.
You just need a motion to accept the offers on the two thousand thirteen F one fifty and the two thousand nine F one fifty? So make that motion.
Second.
Can we move second step to bids on the two vehicles?
Secondly.
Save us the eye?
Uh.
Imposed? Okay, what else, Travis?
Secondly, we really need to hire somebody for water wastewater. If we could get a motion to hire a water wastewater worker, you know, we'd prefer to find somebody that's got their certifications, but if the right person comes along that doesn't, then it's okay too.
Like that advertise for harm?
Mm-hmm, for water wastewater.
I'm gonna make, make a motion that we advertise to hire for water wastewater.